Okay, welcome to everybody that's joined us here in council chambers, as well as those that have joined us in the comfort of their home. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, September 12th, 2016. If we could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we've received within our city. We ask for a portion of your wisdom as we deliberate the issues before us this evening. And as always, we ask for your presence, that it be felt by those serving our military, particularly those serving in foreign lands, and also with their families. We all sleep safely here in the United States of America. We need to remember that they are out there protecting all of us. Please also ask a blessing to our public servants, especially our police and fire. Ask for those things in Jesus' name. Amen. And I believe the American Revolution is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of special presentations. I'm going to do them from the podium over here. The first one I'm going to do would be the -- I'm going to read a proclamation first, then we'll go to the DAR, and then I'm going to hand out a certificate of appreciation. I wanted to start this evening, we held a 9-1-1 ceremony, 9/11 ceremony, I should say, yesterday at the football stadium. I did read a proclamation, I'm going to repeat that proclamation tonight because I believe it's that important. This is a proclamation, this is a Day of Homage, Honor, and Hope on the 15th anniversary of September 11th, 2001. Whereas 15 years ago, on Tuesday, September 11th, 2001, America was viciously and cowardly attacked by terrorists who share none of the values represented and cherished by Americans. And whereas those terrorists attempted to disrupt, destroy, and forever change our democratic form of government and our way of life, and whereas the American spirit of perseverance and the American values of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness will triumph over hatred and evil, such as that when prompted, this attack. Now therefore, I W. Eugene Hunt, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pecosin, do hereby proclaim this day, September 11th, 2016, as a day to memorialize those men, women, and children who lost their lives, and to remember and honor the courage and selflessness of all who responded, reflecting on their strength and grace which lifted us up from the depths All right, members of the CAR? I have a proclamation to read for you. Thank you all for coming this evening. It's especially important, and it's so fitting that we do this right after the event that we had yesterday. Thank you all for coming. This is a proclamation, and it is whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 229th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd of each year as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I W. Eugene Hunt, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pecosin, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week here in Pecosin. And I urge all citizens to study the Constitution to express gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship in the republic functioning under the superb body of laws that is the Constitution of the United States. So I offer this proclamation to the members of the CAR.
On behalf of Morehouse Society, CAR, and Charles Parish, DAR, I accept this proclamation. Thank you, City of Pecosin, Mayor Hunt, and citizens of Pecosin. Thank you.
(applause) We want to hear you.
The United States Constitution proclaims liberty throughout all the land.[353.72][353.72](noise)
Appreciate it. I have one last presentation, and I have to regretfully hand this one out. And Craig, if you could join me up here at the podium, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. This is a certificate of appreciation, and is to Mr. Craig Moore for his invaluable service on the Economic Development Authority from March of 1999 to March of 2016. I accepted, heard that Craig was going to leave us on the EDA. I will tell you that that body is represented by several different facets of business. And what Craig brought to that board was the banking part of that. I will tell you that he served for an incredibly long time, that he helped us in many, many ways, not just on the Economic Development Authority. And it's my sincere hope that though I got him off this board, I'll put him somewhere else. Okay? So thank you, Craig. Would you like to --[475.00][475.00](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would just thank council for the foresight you saw 19 years ago in forming the EDA. Without it, work cannot be done behind the scenes. It certainly makes it easier, and it keeps -- we all have a vested interest to keep our schools strong, and our first responders paid, and teachers as well paid well, and our real estate value's up. So our continued challenge is to grow our tax base, and we appreciate your support, EDA. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
And next item is a public hearing, and that public hearing is a request of Robert Moses, developer, and John B. Graham, property owner, for land use map amendment, rezoning, and All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is an audience for visitors. And there is a public hearing on here concerning the development on With Creek Road. conditional use permit. And this is Tax Map Parcels 27, Act 2, 27, Tac 8, Tac 2, and conditional use permit So if you're here to speak for that, just hold those until we have that public hearing. on one of those parcels. But would anybody like to address council on another issue? Randy, is there a presentation?
Mr. Wyman will make the presentation.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for council to consider
He's leaving us at the end of the week.
approval of the minutes. May I move that we approve our minutes of the regular session of August 22nd, 2016? Should we talk about that first? Sure.[558.82][558.82](laughing) Motion made and seconded that we approve those minutes. Let me say before you start, and before we may not like what you say, or something Questions or comments of council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
like that.[569.12][569.12](laughing) Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Say before you start, Kevin, what an honor it's been to work with you.
Aye.
Councilwoman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Okay?
Councilman Southall.
We appreciate your service to the City of Pecosin.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
We wish you well.
And Mayor Hunt.
We wish you better with the City of Pecosin.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very well. And the work session? But we understand that you'll be moving to Chesapeake? May I move that we approve the minutes of the work session of the same evening?
Yes, sir.
Seconded. That we approve those also?
Yes, sir. We're moving to Chesapeake, accepted a position with the City of Suffolk.
Any other comments? Seeing none, Judy, please. City of Suffolk?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Okay, very well.
Aye.
And we wish you luck, and I do talk to the city --
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
I'll let her know that you're over there.
Councilman Southall.
Oh, thank you.
I'll tell her all the stuff I know, too.[604.29][604.29](laughing)
Good luck to me, then.[608.16][608.16](laughing) I think, yeah, I feel the same way. It's been an honor to represent the City Department of Planning for the last five years, and learned a great deal under Debbie's leadership, and I'm certainly going to miss it. Thank you. So as you may recall, it's your -- October, I'm trying to fast forward here, August 22nd work session, we talked in length about a set of land use applications, three in total, from Mr. Robert Moses, he's the developer of the towns of Pecosin project. You can see this building here, that's Phase 1 of the development, that has been completed by and large. CEOs have been issued on the residential units, and they've had a few residents move in, is my understanding. So for all intents and purposes, that first building is constructed. As a part of this application, the applicant is requesting to expand it, essentially by three additional buildings similar to what has been constructed already, and 26 town home units. Back in 2012, the developer received permission to construct three mixed-use buildings, Phase 1 being that building I showed you at the onset, and two additional buildings, very similar to that, with square footage of about 4,800 square foot footprint, so a little over 16,000 square feet per building. And the -- I'm sorry, a little over 12,000 square feet. And the developer is wishing to expand upon that, like I mentioned. Back in 2012, the developer received permission to build that building, as well as the two others that I mentioned, and went through a very similar process. One of the parcels required a rezoning, and as such necessitated the need for a review of our land use map, as well as a conditional use permit. And back in 2012, the way we handled that is through the stacking. At that time, development in the Village Commercial District, any residential construction, required to be stacked on top of byright commercial space. So Mr. Moses received a conditional use permit back in 2012 to do that, actually required it for the third floor of residential. And these conditional use permit applications that we'll talk about are similar, however, back in 2014, we allowed for a separation of uses. So it really allowed a different product to be produced out of the Village Commercial District. And that's where these separate townhomes are coming into play. And I'll get into that a little bit further, but we're all pretty familiar with this property. It's located immediately south of the Pecosin Common Shopping Center, where the food line's located, and circles essentially the EDA pond that was constructed in the Big Woods, not far from With Creek Road. I'll be talking in phases a lot this evening, and this is Phase 1, this red area here. That's what's been constructed so far. Phase 2 will consist of two like buildings, very similar in square footage, first floor of commercial space, second floor of residential space, and a third floor of residential space. He has an active conditional use permit, like I mentioned, for that third floor of residential space in those buildings. This blue area, I'll also call these the Graham parcels, they front on With Creek Road, two separate parcels, a little shy of 2 and 1/2 acres, about 2.3 acres or so. And on this parcel, first of all, it requires a land use map amendment that would facilitate rezoning requests. Presently, these parcels are zoned B2, and Mr. Moses is requesting that they be rezoned to Village Commercial. Additionally, with this parcel, there are going to be two very like buildings to what we already see. And one building that looks a lot like that, however, it will consist of three floors of commercial space. That commercial space will allow Mr. Moses to yield 26 townhome units on this long, narrow piece that mirrors the EDA pond. It's green up here, Phase 4. And it's about 2 and 1/2 acres itself, and Mr. Moses is proposing to construct 26 townhome It's important to note that Phase 4 is already zoned appropriately. The townhome piece, it's zoned Village Commercial already. So your review of the land use map amendments, which would change the land use designation of the Graham parcels, Phase 3, from general commercial to village commercial, and the rezoning request for those exact same parcels, which will change zoning designation from B2 to Village Commercial, does not impact Phase 4, that townhome parcel. This is just a chart that really consolidates it. Essentially, those first two parcels, Phase 3, they're going to require the land use map amendment, the rezoning, as well as a conditional use permit, and all phases are going to be covered by that conditional use permit. And that conditional use permit is necessary in order to allow the applicant to yield over a 1:1 ratio on commercial to residential. And in this case, he's asking to yield a 2:1 ratio of residential to commercial, or 66% of the development will be of a residential nature. Here's a zoning map. You can see that the VC district, which is gray, gets really close to With Creek Road there. With Creek Road, really between Hunt Landy away, close to Valasia, north of With Creek, or north of Victory Boulevard, is our B2 With Creek Road corridor. These are made up of uses that require the visibility provided to them on With Creek Road, usually higher-impact traffic producers, think your grocery stores, shopping centers, things like that, they'd like to find a nice home on With Creek Road, thus we intended we developed that district. The VC district, once you get more into the interior of the Big Woods, certainly north of Oxford Run, and Oxford Run kind of wraps around it, both the south and the western ends, all the way to Victory Boulevard. We have some development now in the Village Commercial District. Certainly, Mr. Moses's is the first of real scale, aside from this building, City Hall, and I still refer to it, the office complex at the corner of City Hall Avenue and Victory Here's a little addendum that was provided to us in support of the application, and with the conceptual plan, and the land use applications. But you can see Phases 1 and 2, which were approved back in 2012, you had about 14,000 square feet of commercial space, 41,000 square feet of residential. Phases 3 and 4 will bring that total to 52,000 square feet of commercial space, and approximately 115,000 square feet of residential space. Here's a zoom in, a close-up, if you will, of the provided conceptual plan. You can see clearly marked Phase 1, and this is, you can see With Creek Road at the bottom there, so that gives you a point of view. Your north arrow would be facing towards Alpha Street here. Phase 2 would be those two additional buildings, commercial on the bottom, residential on the top two floors. And then you have Buildings 4, 5, and 6. Buildings 4 and 5 will be a lot like Buildings 1 through 3. Building 6 will be solely commercial, and that's important from the rezoning side, because if this rezoning is approved, it will impact, actually disrupt, the B2 district that you have on With Creek Road. So it's important to not dismiss the uses that you already have there, both from a design standpoint, as well as a use standpoint. So it's encouraging that that building will consist solely of commercial uses, and that's something that we'll cover in our conditions here in a few minutes. Here's a rendering provided to us by the applicant. This is of the townhome structures. You can see they're all garaged, all three stories. Here's the rear elevation, that was the front elevation. This will be the side facing the pond, so this would be facing With Creek Road from where they're constructed. So these are some of the things to keep in mind as you're considering these applications. There are a small bit of wetlands on the property, Phase 3, actually very close to With Creek Road. My understanding is that the applicant's already in communications with Army Corps of Engineers, they'd have jurisdiction over that. Small amount, I believe it's under a tenth of an acre, and application still required for that, but as far as I know, little to no mitigation from a developer's standpoint. Because of the location of this being both in the Village Commercial District, and even if it wasn't rezoned, the B2 district on With Creek Road would require review by the city's Architecture Review Board. The use in its entirety, this is Phases 1 through 4, so all six buildings and all 26 townhome units are anticipated to create 284 PM peak hour trips. And our PM peak here is about 4:45 to 5:45, and that's how many additional vehicles will be generated by the commercial uses in this, as well as the residential uses. However, that may seem like a large number. It's not anticipated to impact negatively the level of service provided by the intersection of Alpha Street and With Creek Road, so that's encouraging. The Village Commercial District, it's intended to be a mixed-use district that encourages low to moderate traffic volumes. So smaller eatery, smaller shops, things of that nature. So expanding its reach to With Creek Road could present a challenge where you have the district leaking onto With Creek Road, and it's not necessarily the intent of the district to provide that type of visibility, so just keep that in mind. As I mentioned, the building closest to With Creek Road will be solely commercial, that's encouraging. Right now, the Graham parcels, those two parcels, about 2.37 acres, are the -- provide that buffer between the Village Commercial District and the interior of the Big Woods and With Creek Road. We spoke about this at your work session back in August, but the Planning Commission did consider these applications, these three separate applications, at their Monday, August 15th meeting, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of all three of the items by a vote of 5 to 1. They did, however, add one additional condition, and that was related to the occupancy of the entire site. We talked about that at your work session, and we let you know that staff was going to look into that condition a little closer in an effort to clarify it and make sure that it's enforceable, if it's included in your approval. And I'll get into that in a few slides here, but we're presenting conditions separately on these applications. So we have a set of rezoning conditions, and we have a set of conditional use permit conditions. The rezoning conditions include that the layout, as submitted, must be generally adhered to. That's pretty common for rezonings, especially when we have a development proposal at hand. We want to make sure that the developer's going to deliver what's been proposed. Additionally, that the developer shall not yield any more than nine dwellings, units per acre. And that's consistent with what was provided. In fact, the developer provided us a concept that yields about 8 and 1/2, 8.6 units per acre, so we rounded up for good measure. The approval does not grant the ability to develop the parcels individually. So we're looking at this development parcel in its entirety this evening, really Phases 3 and 4, because Phase 2 will get underway here shortly. Within 200 feet of With Creek Road, it must remain commercial, and that, again, is what is shown on the application. This is just another layer of protection for us. The setbacks from With Creek Road and non-zoned Village Commercial parcels shall be consistent with the B2 district. This is primarily from With Creek Road and to the parcels to its north and to its south. To its north would be the Georgia's Restaurant Building, to its south would be the Dollar General. So we're just asking that those setbacks are adhered to for the sake of consistency of the B2 district. Phase 4 must be developed last, that's the townhome units, and all improvements are subject to site plan approval, so no approval tonight will circumvent the site plan process. And I'll get into the conditional use permit conditions. A lot of redundancies here, but keep in mind that while they're part of the same development proposal, there are two separate approvals here. The right-of-way dedication and improvement shall be made to Alpha Street, and that's for the segment in front of Phase 4. That'd be an extension of Alpha Street, essentially. The ARB review is required, that it must be constructed and operational within five years. Again, we see the nine dwelling units per acre, cannot exceed that. All conditions set forth in Phase 1 and 2's approval shall be adhered to. So this does not trump, but it works in collaboration with that original approval back in 2012. All trash containers must be shielded from view. Local, state, and federal permits shall be obtained. And I'm going to cover this in a second, but as it's currently written, a city council may revoke this permit under certain circumstances if they see fit. And lastly, all applicable land use regulations must be adhered to. So we mentioned the Planning Commission's addition earlier, and essentially what they wanted was about 66%, 2/3 occupancy of the building prior to the construction of Phase 4. And that's what we put that condition together on. However, like I mentioned during your work session discussion, it was discussed that maybe we need to clarify that a little better, or how are we going to accomplish this? So we took that same language and strengthened it a little bit, and bear with me, I'm going to read it quickly here, but prior to the issuance of any and all building permits related to Phase 4. Any and all is important there, because you're talking townhome buildings. A lot of times, they're constructed in groups of four, six, or eight. So each time the developer comes in to get a building permit for a section of buildings, we would then ask him to provide us in the form of lease agreements and issued certificates of occupancy that verify that 2/3 of the commercial and residential components of the entire development, to include Phases 1, which is already constructed, 2, and 3. We want to make sure they have leaseholders at the time of building permit issuance. So that's how we strengthened that a little bit, to make sure it was enforceable on our end. And additionally, during your work session on these items back on August 22nd, it was discussed whether or not Condition 8 maybe went a little too far, especially with the development of the size. Condition 8, if any time the operation is in violation of any local, state, or federal regulations, including conditions set forth in this use permit, the city reserves the right to revoke the permit. And that's been a standard condition of our conditional use permits. However, usually when you're allowing a use -- So we took that same language and strengthened it a little bit. And bear with me, I'm going to read it quickly here. But prior to the issuance of any and all building permits related to Phase Four, "any and all" is important there because you're talking townhome buildings. A lot of times, they're constructed in groups of four, six, or eight. So each time the developer comes in to get a building permit for a section of buildings, we would then ask him to provide us in the form of lease agreements and issued certificates of occupancy that verify that two-thirds of the commercial and residential components of the entire development, to include Phases One, which is already constructed, Two, and Three, we want to make sure they have leaseholders at the time of building permit issuance. So that's how we strengthened that a little bit, to make sure it was enforceable on our end. And additionally, during your work session on these items back on August 22nd, it was discussed whether or not Condition Eight maybe went a little too far, especially with the development of the size. Condition Eight, if any time the operation is in violation of any local, state, or federal regulations, including conditions set forth in this use permit, the city reserves the right to revoke the permit. And that's been a standard condition of our conditional use permits. However, usually when you're allowing a use, a single use to operate on a property, that may not necessarily align with what's allowed under the zoning ordinance. So after reviewing all the other conditions, staff found that actually three conditions within the rezoning portion of it, and two conditions in the conditional use permit request offered sufficient assurance that the final project will align with the development proposal as submitted. And thus, it really negates the need for conditional use permit eight, if you all are comfortable with that. And I wanted to let you know before I wrap up, we did receive a letter from the developer stating some thoughts, if you will, on these conditions. The city manager, it's my understanding, has provided that to you all before the meeting to review. And Mr. Moses is certainly here to address his concerns as far as those conditions are concerned. But with that being said, that wraps up my presentation, and I can certainly take any questions or comments you have.
Questions for Kevin?
Did you say there were residents in the first building already?
Last I spoke to Mr. Moses, there was at least one resident. They've been CO'd, so they're ready. The commercial spaces have not been CO'd. The structure itself has, but the individual tenants, I don't, has, just the restaurant. CO is a certificate of occupancy, excuse me.
Yeah. So in other words, it's been finally inspected?
Yes, it's ready to go. The building official has determined that it is safe for occupancy.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
If we think of something, we'll have you come back up. Appreciate it.
Please.
All right, this is a public hearing, and as a public hearing, we'll open the podium for anybody who would like to speak on this, on any of these things that the council is going to look through. We have three separate motions. I mean, we have three separate things. One is a rezoning, one is a permit, and the other is approval of the overall concept, I believe.
Land use map.
Land use map. So any of those, I'll open the podium now if there's anybody who would like to speak on this. Up.
Sorry, I'm just seeing some of this for the first time. Sorry.
Okay.
Council, thank you again for an opportunity to be before you and go over what it looked like as the final phase of a strategy to pull together a nice Village Commercial District development around the pond that's right next to Pecoson Commons and, well, at the heart of the city of Pecoson. Watching Kevin's presentation tonight, I definitely am okay with the conditional use permit, Three and Four, that he mentioned. I'm just now getting up to speed with what is left over for the Conditions One, Two, The Condition Six is the one that I'd just like to point out that, right now in Phase One, we had businesses come into the fountains with the understanding that there would be a supporting cast of residents above them. And so they've taken a risk on that, and they're expecting that to happen. It is a new development, and they feel like the word of mouth is their best advertisement. And so what I would like to continue or leave open is allow the market conditions of residence versus commercial space, let that just be in the free market rather than having restrictions placed on the property that doesn't allow the developer to meet the demand that may be there. If I have to generate supply based on rules that may not align necessarily with the marketplace in terms of the residential or commercial component, then it may tie my hands to not be able to satisfy the needs of the city or new residents or new businesses that may be coming in. So one point that was made was that no parcel in itself would be developed individually. But yet, one of the conditions is telling me that I cannot develop a parcel individually, which is the fourth parcel. So I think those are incongruent, and I would appreciate counsel just to not so much tie my hands and allow me as a developer to build as necessary to meet whatever the marketplace will demand on me. So thank you again. This has been a long process. Many of you have been here since day one, and I appreciate the support I've gotten from this city to put forth this new development. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for consideration by council. I will tell, remind council, we have basically three separate actions. The first is a resolution amending or denying an amendment to the future land use maps, or basically saying, you know, kind of seeing the whole concept. The second is a resolution approving or denying the rezoning of the Graham property. And the third is a resolution accepting or denying the conditional use permit on the residential dwellings above the second. So you have three separate actions in here to consider. Anybody prepared to make a motion on any? Let's start with the first one, the resolution approving the amendments to the future land use map.
Move that we adopt the resolution approving an amendment to the future land use maps of the city's adopted comprehensive plan for 2008 through 2028.
Second, a motion made, and second, that we simply change the future land use map of the city of Pecoson. Comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Next is a resolution approving or the opposite, rezoning of the 2.37 acres of With Creek Road.
I move that we adopt the resolution approving the rezoning of 2.37 acres of property. Looking on the west side of With Creek Road, immediately to the south of George's Restaurant, tax map parcel number is 27-09.
Question made, and second, that we approve that resolution? Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the third is a resolution approving conditional use permit to allow residential dwellings above the second floor in a mixed-use building and residential separate from a commercial and/or mixed-use structure.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow residential dwellings above the second building and residential separate from a commercial and/or mixed-use structure, not to. Two-thirds of the commercial four areas in the village commercial district on properties specifically identified as tax map. Number 27-09-00-02, 27-18-00-02, and 27-01-00-00-87, with the affected item number six and with the deletion of item eight, condition of rate fee.
So basically agreeing with the city staff's recommendation to, that there's enough control without, to revoke the permit by council, and six. Six was just a, a, oh, that's grammatical error. Got it. Right of way instead of right of ways. And ten continues, and what's in here is the 66 percent occupancy requirements of Phase Four, I believe. Okay. All right, questions or comments? Are we still applying the 66 percent? Yep. Okay. Question made, and second. All right, now questions or comments? Bud got his answer. Anybody else?
So right now, our regulations do not allow residents on the third or fourth floor, correct, or not?
Well, this is a.
This will allow. So obviously, we don't allow it now?
Go ahead, yeah. Right now, you have a certain amount of byright residential stacked above, and a process that you can go through to increase that. It's increase from a 50-50 match to a one-to-two ratio or 66, regardless of whether it's standing one on top of each other or separated, that same process, expand the ratio from 50-50 to one-to-two is the process.
It's not based on floors.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we had it worded at once.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question about, we're preventing Phase Four from being started until Phases One, Two, and Three. Have leaseholders, is this correct, right?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds leaseholders. However, Phase Four is already correctly zoned. So that he could do it by right?
Still has, the Village Commercial District still has the requirement to have so many square footage of commercial to be able to build residential. So he's basically taking an existing piece of VC, correct me if I get this wrong, he's taking an existing piece of Village Commercial, and he is rezoning a piece of B2. And one of the buildings on there is going to be totally commercial, and he's basically offsetting that use to be allowed to build Phase Four. And so the control that council is trying, contemplating putting in place, says that you will have 66 percent occupancy. Right, and that it is currently zoned Village Commercial. This doesn't have enough, there's not enough business in what he's proposing to do it without the other component.
Phase Four will still be the last one constructed.
By the way, we've got it set up here.
Thank you for allowing me to interject. I would just remind you, in the rezoning that you approved moments ago, there is also language that relates, that's the rezoning number six, I'll read it to you so you don't have to read it. Phase Four, the townhouse site shall in no circumstances be constructed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the commercial structure located in Phase Three. So in the rezoning, commercial building, which generates essentially the ability for the residential, it's tied that way, the conditional use permit provision added by the. Not only directly those two buildings, but the project as well. I just wanted to point out that that one also is a controlling factor. So your question, I think, should be whether.
That's what I'm wondering, whether we are overcontrolling here. There already is a controlling factor.
There is a controlling factor with regard to the sequencing between the commercial building, which generates the residential square footage, and that sequence. Question is, do you feel that it's also appropriate, as the planning commission did, to put a controlling factor across the entirety of the first few phases before Phase One? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think the difference is that in the conditional use permit, we're spelling out that you've got to have two-thirds. Rezoning, all we're saying is he can't get a building permit until the last part. So I think we do need both of them, because otherwise, if we delete stipulation in the conditional use permit, he could possibly argue that I can go ahead and build the townhouses and not have the occupancy.
I think they should mirror each other, and I think the conditional use permit further ties it down.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion made, and second. Can I answer everybody's question on that?
Would, I just say I'm worried, I don't want to make it so difficult that we don't, that we inhibit people coming, which, and I know that two-thirds was probably thrown out there as an arbitrary number, would, is, do we think that number, is 50 percent, would that be enough of a controlling factor to get the ball rolling? Or is, do we really want two-thirds? I don't know. I'm asking your opinion. Do we think that two-thirds is important, or do we think that 50 percent occupancy might be enough to have things, to show that things are moving in the right direction? I don't know.
Since this is really the.
And it could be changed later on, as a pass.
That's what I was going to say, since this is really our first attempt at true Village, as development, if you want to call it corner Village Commercial, that's, it's not, it's commercial, at City Hall. This is really the first time that we're exercising this. I think it's important to step off a little on the conservative route, and recognizing that if this becomes a hindrance, I think we can consider, based on the facts, where he may be. And I'm not sure that, what type of process would that take? Full, going all the way back through, or could that be?
Future process to amend the conditional use permit would follow the exact same process the applicant would make in application.
Same, same as we were changing. I might inject that the planning commission thought that two-thirds number was a good number, and that's what it's based on, okay? And I would like to support the planning commission in that I do not know the conversations that took place during the planning commission's meetings, and then, should there be an issue that we ought to correct, we can still come back and revisit that.
We have talked about two-thirds in other projects along the way, so two-thirds is a number that has been talked about previously.
And I know this, but I also know it was sort of just thrown out there. And that's fair enough. I think we can go with two-thirds, but I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay, that answers that question. Any others? So we have a motion made, and seconded, to approve the, I changed my page already. Approve the resolution approving the conditional use permit, all right, for the occupants. All right, those last of the three. Is it Judy?
Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very well. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution establishing guidelines for development of EDA-owned properties in Big Woods. And this is as a result of the council retreat some months back.
Yes, sir. Council members, leadership of the planning commission, and economic development authority staff held a retreat in April of this year and began to start over in your thinking as it related to the EDA parcel on the north side of Victory Boulevard, the one that had been previously under contract to CRES. Main purpose was to gain a further understanding of what the expectations and hopes were for the development of that parcel, so that future efforts to attract potential businesses and potential development could be geared towards what it is the community wanted. potential development could be geared towards what it is the community wanted as opposed to what it was that the zoning ordinance may now. Through that process and at the end of it, the council and again, the planning commission and EDA leadership developed consensus around nine guiding principles for development for that piece of property. Served two primary purposes. One is to provide interim guidance to the Economic Development Authority as the comprehensive plan update process. Other process is to provide input into comprehensive plan. Additionally, through that process at the retreat, the members that. Five possible development concepts for further refinement and study. So. In Section Two. And then, lastly, the consensus document, which was the subject of your work session in August, also talked about next steps in a framework that essentially works the issue. Resolution of that, Mayor, you asked that this be prepared for consideration at this meeting.
It is. Is anybody prepared with a motion on this resolution?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution establishing guidelines for development of EDA-owned properties in Edwards.
Second.
A motion made in second that we approve this resolution. Again, Randy touched base, this is based on trying to aim development instead of accepting what walks through the door, okay? And that's where we received the last time is basically a request that came in the door and this is to aim the EDA at certain uses, okay? So, any other comments on this?
Judy, please.
Councilman Mayor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next is a resolution approving an amendment to the city's personnel policy manual and this is pertaining to retiree health insurance.
Mayor, the item before you is proposed amendment to the city's human resource policy specifically to add an enhanced retiree health insurance benefit. A proposed policy change would provide a fifty percent cost share for eligible employees who had a minimum of twenty years' worth of service with the city at time of retirement. There are some other criteria, but that's the most significant one and would provide that up until age sixty-five for those that wish to continue their health care into retirement. The policy is drafted, three essential main goals. Recruitment, to assist us in our ability to recruit. Insula, which is where we are most often competing for the same employees, but beyond as well. Retention of our employees throughout their career. Be faced not only market competition in getting them here to begin with, particularly in the first third of their career, once they're fully trained and fully operational, they become even more marketable to our neighbors and others. And lastly, and it's not determined, it's a priority, they're all important, recognition of dedicated long-term employees. We're talking about folks that have worked for this city for twenty years or more. The process that we followed at the conclusion of the budget, as you articulated, I think it was in June, Mayor, we developed a plan concept, certainly was assisted by that by Master Firefighter Canela, who is here. Appreciate Tom, everything that you contributed to this. Once we developed a concept, it to an independent actuarial analysis so that we knew what it would likely cost, that to develop a funding plan so that it would be sustainable and that plan is included in the staff report. And then, we took that financial plan to our financial advisors to make sure that nothing in the plan or the funding plan would have an adverse effect on our bond rate. And in short, it's affordable, it's sustainable, and if we follow the funding plan suggested over time, it should have no negative impact on our credit rate. So, we offer it to you for consideration and I would recommend its approval.
Anybody prepared to make a motion on this item?
I move that we adopt a resolution approving an amendment to Section forty-three of the city's personnel policy manual, reference retiree health insurance coverage.
Okay.
A motion made in second that we approve this retiree health insurance and again, as we said early on in the year, you know, we just needed to make sure that we were going to put something out there that we could then sustain and not have to put something out there in two years. So, I think we did due diligence on this and I appreciate the staff's work on this and I appreciate the suggestion, okay? So, all right, with that said, any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. This is for all city employees. The fire department did the work and put it out, I understand that, but it covers everybody in the city.
Yes, sir. It's designed for all city of Pecosin employees, full-time employees that are eligible.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know probably at the end is where I should probably bring this up, but this is something that's been talked about. I got on council about four years ago and Tom was in my ear continually with this program and that just looking at it and watching it, it's just, it's just a win-win situation all the way around in so many levels. It's a win-win for the city and its employees. And Tom, just kudos, man, because it's persistence, perseverance is really, really what this is all about. The city staff as well for looking at it like they did and realizing the significance of it. So, I've been on council for four years. This is probably the biggest thing I've been a part of and I'm appreciative of part of it.
Anything else? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts with CPG Incorporated for the elevation of ten homes and an ordinance appropriating the funding.
Mr. Mayor, there are folks here that can answer detailed questions and I want to take a moment because they're not going to come up and let us have them. But I really want to thank a bunch of people on staff for their perseverance. Everybody deserves a thanks. Evie deserves more of a thanks than anyone else. In an organization in which you get other duties as assigned, which can come at different directions, Evie stepped forward to help us manage this process. She is the central point of coordination on the project and also with our citizens. Helped by many people, including engineering and finance and building and our office and Judy and others, and I don't mean to leave anyone out. But this action that's here tonight is the finalization of the budget. As you know, we bid this project, it came in substantially over. We rebid it, we took it apart, tried to learn lessons, it was still substantially over budget. And we had thought at one point, the conversation we were going to be having was either to cancel it, talking about real people who are looking for elevations in the flood zones, or asking them to come up with considerably more money. And we were talking, the federal grant requirement requires the homeowner to provide a five percent cash. We were potentially talking a hundred and five percent. And I wanted to tell you, very seldom does a state ever do anything that's helpful. But when they do, we should point it out. Amy Howard at VDEM, working with FEMA, was able to identify both the state and federal funds necessary to move this forward. So, this represents the final budget allocation and the approval to begin the elevation of these. This is Grant One. You'll recall, we actually have three grants in play.
Okay, well said. So, State One, then how many losses? But we'll give it to them.
Get a normal.
They get a win. They get a win. Okay. So, is there a motion to adopt the resolution first?
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into two contracts with CPG Incorporated for the elevation of ten houses identified under HMP, HMGP Grant four-zero-seven-two-dash-zero-zero-two.
Second. A motion made in second that we adopt the resolution authorizing the contract. Any questions or comments?
The company, CPG. Have they had experience in the city of Pecosin, does anyone know? I've researched several companies that do lift houses and that wasn't one of them, I just wondered.
They do have experience in Hampton Roads. I'm unaware of them having any experience in Pecosin. To step back a moment, when we rebid the project in light of the cost escalation, the number of qualified bidders we had went down instead of up. We had met with the people that had bid and the people that didn't bid that had expressed an interest and we asked them, well, what could we have done to make this more attractive and potentially bring the cost down? We did almost all of those things and it resulted in no real savings and significantly less bidders. But having said that, we have checked the references on the particular firm and they have done a good job.
I hadn't heard about them, but I know the folks that are looking forward to having their house since it's elevated are.
All right, anything else? Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by.
And a motion on the ordinance that will move the money through the city?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations transfers to fiscal year two thousand sixteen.
A motion made in second that we federal grant money, the state grant money, and move it through for this specific purpose. That's what the ordinance is.
All right, questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Gaston Brothers Utilities for construction of storm drainage piping system located on the northerly side of Little Florida Road.
Mr. Mayor, you may recall, probably more than two years ago, Councilman Green brought this to your attention as something we should consider. When we had end-of-year money coming from VDEM, began to look at piping some of the ditches along the major roadways in Florida specifically, but there are certainly others, Pecosin Avenue and others as well. It's taken a while because nothing is ever as simple as it seems. Mine was not simple. The federal and state approval process, the point that they got before, this took a very, very long time. Through Ellen's perseverance and help from Ann and others, we are at this point, we believe that utilizing the money that we have, that you have previously appropriated to this process and some money that's left over for some ditching projects that we've had, drainage projects, sorry, that we have enough to do the entirety of this six-hundred-and-sixteen-foot section. Your approval tonight of the resolution, the ordinance, we'll get to it and they already know that they can work during seafood festival week.
Very good. Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Gaston Brothers Utilities LLC for construction of a storm drainage pipe system located on the northerly side of Little Florida Road.
Okay, a motion made in second that we approve this. Ellen, thank you for being.
This is some of the deepest ditch in Pecosin, I believe. This is one of those where.
Thrilled that we're going to make this change in that S-turn of Little Florida Road. And actually make a much better situation there, so appreciate all the hard work. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, and Judy will move through the resolution and then we'll get to the ordinance.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
The motion carried by.
And then, the ordinance moving the money from the fund balance and using the funding in this budget for drainage progress.
I move we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers to fiscal year two thousand sixteen.
A motion made in second that we do that. Randy, you have a comment?
I just wanted to make a point for those watching at home, that fund balance is the capital project.
Okay, very good. All right, questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to.
Okay. The next item is a resolution amending the nineteen ninety-four service agreement of the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission.
Mr. Mayor, you've seen these kinds of changes before. In fact, a couple of months ago, you did consider similar ones. As you know, we're a part of the commission. We collectively are part of the operations and management of the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission. Had to read that. What you see here is essentially two changes, which mirror our jail and one is rather than being subject to very variable pricing in terms of budget each year, that they would use a five-year running average so that localities would have a smoothing of things when they're going badly, but also a smoothing of things, the trade-off is when they're going well. And the idea is to prevent unexpected surprises, very similar to the jail. The other is to shift to a quarterly billing, that's standard and the other membership have. And the last one, which is something new, but is just a recognition of the fact that the detention commission itself may, which I serve on. May from time to time establish a maintenance and replacement fund budget, in which case the allocation. I have to tell you, the first commission meeting I went to on your behalf was probably, they were talking about this at that time. Getting this many.
Looking at the communities.
Is nothing short of unusual and this tells you how much time and care collectively we took in making sure.
This is a much different makeup than the jail, than the regional jail as far as the. Interesting, and this is something that a lot of folks don't think of when they're, when we're out there and talking about, you know, the city of Pecosin's part, you know, when the regional jail, we're dealing with Williamsburg, Jame City County and the like. Here, we're all the way up the middle peninsula. We're Essex, Gloucester, Hanover, Jame City, King and Queen, King William, Lancaster, Matthews, Middlesex, New Kent, Northumberland, Richmond, and Westmoreland, as long, as well as two cities, that's Pecosin and Williamsburg. So, much different makeup and it tells you about the regional ties that we have as a city when we run services like this so that we don't have to do it ourselves. So, thank you, Randy, for participating on that board. And council, is there somebody prepared to make a motion on this resolution?
Adopt a resolution of the member jurisdictions of the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission, amending Sections three-point-seven and four-point-one of the nineteen ninety-four service agreement.
Okay, motion made in second that we approve this and modify this agreement. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments, the city man?
You're more than usual. You'll indulge me. First, I just want to thank you on behalf of the employees for your action in amending the human resource policy. The city appreciate that and the time that you all spent with staff along the way in briefings, asking questions. asking questions, and helping us develop the policy you passed this evening. I know that several of you are probably going to speak to the 9/11 event, and you already have just started. In addition to just saying, "Job well done" to so many people, I wanted to specifically thank Dave and Gretchen, who got one of those other duties as assigned, sort of like Evie got. They worked together to make sure there were no cracks in the plan, and they certainly had a lot of help, but they were well into it themselves. Wanted to take a moment to thank Public Works for a couple of things. Today, the folks from Public Works were going throughout the city picking up storm debris, and so if we were hard to find in other areas today, it's because we committed every truck we had to try to get that done today. And at the same time, while doing all of that, I heard this, heard yesterday evening about a repair that needed to be done at the seawall in Essex, and by 2:00 this afternoon, it had been done while they were doing all the rest of it. So I want to thank them for their responsiveness. And lastly, just an infote note, in anticipation of your vote this evening on the EDA parcel plan, I will be briefing the EDA at 8:30, and that's all I have, sir.
Very good. All right, comments of directors of council?
Councilman? I was just going to add another thank you to what Randy mentioned about the cleanup. They were down hard to beat at 11:30 this morning. I was talking to the guys, they had almost a full truck, and said they'd already closed by that time, so they were really keeping busy, and they did a great job, so appreciate that.
Green?
I want to thank Ellen for the work she did on this storm drain project. I know any time you try to put something in the ground where there's umpteen million other things, that things can go wrong, and I've been following it, and she's been pulling her hair out, but stuck with it and saw that it came through, so thank you, Ellen.
Henry?
Okay, sorry. Thank you to everybody involved in that commemorative service yesterday. That was just very moving, especially to Carl Olson for stepping up at the last minute to play the keyboard. That was, your remarks and Gordon's were just super.
Yeah, I thought Carl did an excellent job. I'd like to be able to play the piano like that, my God. Henry?
Sorry, I missed that. Again, thanks to Bob Moses for his projects he's got here in the city. Big thanks to the city staff and Tom for helping put this, our current package together. Producer Bob just told me in my ear that it's Redskins Zero, Pittsburgh Zero, so I hope it stays that way.
All right, Bud?
Yes, several weeks ago, my bride had an accident, and I'd like to thank the members of the rescue squad for their kind and professional care that they gave her transporting her timely and professional manner to the hospital and taking good care of her. I'd also like to thank the members of the fire department, and especially the ladies auxiliary who provided us with many meals, the city staff and council for their cards and flower prayers, and thank you very much, we do appreciate it.
And I'm sorry I missed the remembrance yesterday. I spent my weekend at West Point Military Academy, and it was tough to not be here, but I'd also like to say, you know, my time in Pecosin on the city council is coming towards a close, and we really do have a great team to work for, so.
Well said. I couldn't have said that better myself.
One more thing, Bunting Lane Lines on the, alongside the road, thank you for them. They're there, it's, they're very visible, so it's been interesting because while, when I first saw them, I thought, oh, Lord, I have runway on my street. It has made, I think, that the cars slowed down when they're approaching one another because it emphasizes the narrowness of the street. And so when cars see one another, they stay in, they stay close, and they stay, I think they are slowing down, so I'm hoping it does help.
We know, we have an estimate on electronic speed sign. Do we know that?
It'll be soon. It's not difficult to put up, but Public Works and the public safety folks have been pretty busy since the last storm and cleaning up for it, so I expect, apparently in October, by October.
I just wanted to say that we're really going to miss Mr. Winn when he departs. He's just done such a good job. We're happy that he's going to a better position, but we're sad to see him leave. I wanted to get that in. Other thing Councilwoman Crawford just mentioned about the people that we have here. This morning, there was a long article in the paper about another city just down the road that, you know, that their fire trucks are being repossessed, and it's just an example of our management, why we're not in that kind of position. So we just appreciate all the city staff and management, and you really, really do a lot to make us look. For the 9/11 ceremony yesterday, I thought that was really super as well. When I looked at the program, there were two politicians, three preachers, I figured it'd go on all afternoon, but it was really nice.
I thought the same thing.
Really nice, really well done, and a very, very fitting tribute. That's all.
I don't have anything else to add this evening, so appreciate everybody. We do have a closed session. I was going to get there, Randy, all right. But I do appreciate that, and so this closed session is to talk about a parcel of property. Let me see if I've got that here, it's right here. That's us. We're going to go in pursuant to section 2.23711A3, as amended, to discuss the acquisition of real property for public purposes, and the property that we're talking about is Kirby Park.
So move.
Second. A motion made and seconded, we go into closed session. Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer. Councilwoman Crawford. Councilman Green. Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Southall. Councilman Vernal. And Mayor Hunt. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.